White Caucus Member of the Rocky Mount City Council. We do normally begin our meetings with a prayer. If you're able, I ask you to stand at this time and I will call the Council member who is in line, let it be said. Thank you, Mr. Black. We probably thank you for your presence and love and help in the spirit of the city. We ask that you lead our deliberations and spend our time. We ask that you keep our hearts and minds open to your word, your will, and the prayers of your people. We ask that you also provide us with wisdom to make good decisions in the benefit of all. Keep doing that, you pray. The last time the Mayor of the City Council presented the agenda, we did not have enough time to sign the council's opening. This time, I ask the city clerk called Robert.
Has he been on?
Here.
Right now.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Black.
Here.
You're on.
Here.
I know.
Here.
Item number four, approval of minutes of our registered meeting of the City Council in December of January of 15, 2019. Are there any directions or additions to those minutes? If not, no standing submitted to you. Before we go on to item number five, I want to make a statement and just want to thank you all for being here this afternoon at our call meeting last week. I know somebody who disappeared and I did not comment since the council and I were dealing with a personnel issue and no action was taken. I was advised by the city attorney not to make any comments. However, as your mayor, I feel a need to make some comments today before we move to our next agenda item. I've gotten numerous calls from people that feel like as mayor, I can just make the decision to hire or fire the city manager. So I want to take a moment to explain how the city operates. First, everyone needs to understand that the City Council does not run the city on a day-to-day basis. The City Council sets policy and approves an annual budget. In addition, the City Council may approve or disapprove of agenda items that come before them at a City Council meeting. When it comes to personnel, the City Council is only involved in the hiring and firing of the city manager, the city clerk, and the city attorney. The final action with respect to other hiring and firing decisions rests with the city manager. As mayor and council, we explicitly are not allowed to be involved in human resource decisions. We operate this way as part of our city policy and city charter. As mayor, most of you know that I preside at City Council meetings, but I do not have the right to vote unless required to break the tie. In my eleven years as your mayor, I cannot recall voting on a single matter. It is also true that any motion made by a council member requires a second and needs at least four votes to pass. However, I will tell you that probably ninety-eight percent of the items that have been brought before the council for approval in my eleven years have been approved by unanimous vote. We are a diverse city and our council members represent this diversity. Council member represents the wards that elected them, but they also make decisions that are in the best interest of the entire city. I know that all City Council members, as well as myself, have been listening to citizens' concerns over the last two weeks. Citizen input is extremely important for all of us, but please be aware that any decision made in regards to the city manager will not be made because of newspaper articles or posts on social media. They will be based on facts. Our city manager, Rochelle Smalltoni, was a former city manager of Savannah. Some have questioned issues surrounding her former employment. The council was aware of these issues before hiring Miss Smalltoni and investigation of these issues occurred. The council sent a retired police chief to Savannah to conduct an in-depth investigation. His findings indicated that any accusations were not substantiated. His investigation concluded that the issues were political in nature and not due to any real wrongdoings. When Miss Smalltoni was hired, she was the first city manager in at least fifty years who was not hired from within the city. At the time the manager's position was posted, we did not have any internal candidates. Her selection by the council was based on many factors, including her thirty-five years of local government experience, with hopes that she could bring new ideas and proven management practices to our city. As far as some of the issues that the newspaper has highlighted, most of them are well within the scope of her job. The police search, we've used the same method in the past. The final decision has always been made by the city manager. The process does not call for the assessment team to make recommendations. Team members score each candidate on different exercises that the candidate must complete. At the end of the process, each candidate has a final score. At no time in the process is there a final recommendation given by the assessment team. The next one, hiring city employees. While everyone may not agree with some of the city manager's decisions on the people she has hired for her team, these decisions are well within the scope of her role as city manager. With former city managers Steve Rafer and Charles Penny were here, they both made hiring decisions without assistance city managers and department heads without consulting the City Council. Discrimination lawsuit, there was never a lawsuit as the paper's headlines allege. The city did work out settlement agreement with a employee, John Jessa, but there was not a lawsuit. Renovations, the City Council approved the budgets this year, then included some renovations to City Hall. There's been a lot of deferred maintenance on City Hall over the past years. Again, we replaced all this, and there were repairs that needed to be done. Some of those repairs were needed in the city manager's office and assistant city manager's office. However, again, the council does not make all those decisions, but we have approved overall renovations to the City Hall in their 2019 budget. With all that said, as your mayor, I have two major concerns. First, I want to assure our city employees that we expect any manager to create an employment atmosphere of collaboration and not intimidation. Each and every employee needs an opportunity for professional growth and a pathway to promotion. I'm concerned that we have lost a number of employees with years of experience over the last year. Secondly, has too much damage been done? I'm not sure any manager could be effective after this relentless media pressure. I believe that having the public's trust is critical in managing the operations of the city, and when that trust is lost by employees and the public, it would make it almost impossible to recover. My last remark has to do with all the positive things that are happening in our community. The city, along with other economic partners, have worked hard to bring economic development and businesses to my area. Over the last year, I've gotten many unsolicited comments from people about how positive they feel about Rocky Mount and its future, better than they have felt in many years. Unfortunately, sixteen straight days of negative press and untold number of negative social media posts cannot be good for our city. Please, for the sake of our collective growth and prosperity, press the pause button. Take a deep breath before you speak or write. Posting negative comments about your city is not going to help resolve this personnel issue, but I can predict what it will do. It will make it more difficult to retain and to recruit business and families to our community. I know these are real concerns, and I'm not discounting any of them or your valuable input. Know this, I am equally concerned, but going forward as your mayor and council, we have to be careful that any decisions we now make or any actions that we take in regards to this matter will not put your city at risk. I want to thank you for your continued support, your active interest in this current process, and I hope that everyone will be patient and allow us to work through this difficult issue. To that said, I'm going to call on our mayor pro team to make a statement from our meeting that we just had, that our closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, echo what you said about the many missed calls and emails and text messages that we've all received, and I know I haven't been able to reply to all of those, but certainly your thoughts and ideas are always beneficial. So we've spent hours listening and reading things that you've sent us, and we have also met together for a number of hours on two different occasions and have come to this place. City Council has authorized an independent, in-depth review into matters that it has identified relative to the activities of the city manager and the leadership of our city, including employee morale, employee turnover, compensation practices, hiring practices, overall financial management, HUD's relationship with our city, and other items that may be identified. This review will begin immediately, proceed with speed, thoroughness, and objectivity. The final report will be used by the City Council to determine fair and appropriate steps in this matter. And to kind of echo what the mayor just said to our employees, we deeply value your commitment and service to Rocky Mount. We know this is a time of uncertainty, and we pledge to do all we can to stabilize your work environment. And to the citizens of Rocky Mount, we know that you have questions and we feel you're concerned. We take all matters of this city seriously and especially this current situation with the utmost seriousness. We commit to take the necessary steps to resolve this matter expeditiously and in a way that continues to forward the momentum and excitement that is underway in our city. That is a statement from the City Council.
Thank you, Councilmember Rogers. Again, if you speak tonight, I think there are people in the other room and maybe downstairs that make sure you key your mic and the talk. We're going to move on to item number five now. This is petitions that we receive from the public. Again, this is not a public hearing, but it is part of our regular City Council meeting where we take petitions from the public at each meeting. Tonight, because we do have other city business, we're going to limit these remarks to one hour. We're going to get people that speak three minutes each. I believe that there are going to be people that are going to be on both sides of this particular issue, and I think most of them are going to speak related to the city manager situation. And so we're going to try to be fair and bring people up that have their opinions at this point in time. So first one I want to call is Sue Perry Cole. She lives on Rose Street. If she'd come forward. And the next one, just to key it up, is going to be Liza Daughtry.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Susan Perry Cole. I live at 251 Rose Street in the city. First of all, I want to associate myself with the written testimony submitted today by the group called Women for Growth. I also want to express my continued support and faith in the integrity, maturity, and professionalism of members of the City Council in the midst of this difficult controversy. As our duly elected representatives, with legal oversight responsibility for the performance of the city's chief executive officer, our city manager, I believe the City Council, not the local newspaper, and not an enraged mob of local citizens with a predetermined outcome in mind, is fully competent to address any performance matters that may be at issue concerning the city manager. I want to make this point. Given that our history and legal books in this country are full of examples of gender-based discrimination against women, I want to encourage the City Council to operate in a transparent manner, to reinforce the notions of fairness and even-handed conduct in your personnel deliberations, so that we residents, especially African-American women residents, can maintain our trust and confidence in the City Council's oversight role. Finally, I want to join with the mayor and express my strong support for the continued employment of the city manager. Speaking as a resident of an underserved neighborhood in the city, I have found the city manager and her executive staff to be actively open to listening to neighborhood residents about our serious fare and affordable housing concerns. And I want to speak to all of us as residents of the city. Let's get back to the agenda of building an inclusive and shared prosperity for all of Rocky Mount residents and conclude this unfortunate episode focused on the journalistic lynching of our city manager. Thank you.
One of the people is Mr. Daughtry. I'm going to call a couple of people. They'll get queued up behind him. I also did not read this at the beginning of my statement. Any comments should be directed to the council as a whole, not to individual council members or city staff. If there is an opportunity to raise a question or present a request to the council, in most cases, they're not going to respond tonight, but could refer to staff for follow-up. We do ask that you speak from the podium in a civil, non-argumentative, and respectful manner. Any personal attacks which have the potential to disrupt the meeting will not be tolerated and will be asked to sit down and review from the meeting. So at this time, before you start, I think this is Nathan O. H. R. E. 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 E.
My name is Nathlin O'Ree. My address is 1713 Beverly Road, Rocky Mount, North Carolina. Good evening, Mayor and council members and city manager. It is with my pleasure that I represent the NAACP, the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People. We have confidence in the Rocky Mount City Council and the city manager, Rochelle Smalltoni. The mission of the NAACP is to ensure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of rights of all persons and to eliminate race-based discrimination. The manner in which our city manager has been smeared across the headlines of the local newspaper have been disruptive to the tranquility of our local community, and there appears to be some discriminatory and derogatory undertones surrounding several issues involving our city manager. It is concerning that some misinformation has been blown out of proportion and presented to the public as factual. Though regard has been publicly demonstrated for the attention the city manager has devoted to not only pursuing a high level of advancement and development of our city, but also the transparency with which she has maintained since coming to our city. The local newspaper has acted as an accuser, a judge, and a jury, and has led to heavy accusations that have troubled our community at a level that seems hostile. The citizens of Rocky Mount deserve respect, positive sensitivity, in this current climate of political unrest. It is apparent that the local newspaper does not respect the city manager, the city council, or the citizens of this fine city as demonstrated by the depth and breadth of the negative slant it has reported. To Mrs. Rochelle Smalltoni, I apologize for the distasteful treatment that you and your family have had to endure. I commend you for your humility, grace, confidence, and faith in God that you have maintained as you pursue personal and professional excellence. The verb fire has been printed in the local newspaper, and the term mace symbolically represents the boldness of you, and that you have fired up the city of Rocky Mount. And you have improved safety patterns through streetlights and other community improvements. Mayor Collins and the Rocky Mount City Council, we are looking forward to you to clarify these issues and to help our community move in more united unity. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Chef Jerome Brown, and while they're standing there, the next ones, I think, would be Thomas Walker, Devin Parker, Thomas Walker, and then John Jordan and Lauren Daughtry.
How are you doing?
Good. Just introduce yourself.
My name is Paul Bolo, brother of 2900 Creston Drive, also known as 3637 Woodsville Drive. A couple of weeks ago, I helped put together a bipartisan team to hold Rocky Mount and its management accountable for fiscal mismanagement and ability to maintain a viable and sustainable working environment. I have received a lot of praise from citizens and city employees. I have also been told this team resembles a lynch mob. I don't blame anyone for that accusation. White people have been intimidated by black public officials since well before the Littleton insurrection of 1898, a violent takeover of a fairly elected black government that happened in our own backyard. I see the blood from that conflict, among other, to the leaves. That being said, I would forever maintain that my issue with Miss Smalltoni is not of race, it's not of gender, but of confidence in her ability to help our city grow and keep the best talent, a confidence that was high in 2017 and has since dwindled to nothing. My confidence in Smalltoni's ability to lead our city was compromised by these questions that I asked myself. Why is Ilton Daniels getting a 35.4% raise from his last job as Southern Town Manager? Show of hands, who here has gotten a raise that high, ever? Why would Smalltoni hire Dr. Falken again after all the criticism they've both received in Savannah? Why did Dr. Falken drop the ball on $182,000 of federal funding for a housing project last year? That's irresponsible and it's consistent with a pattern of pickup seen from Falken in Norfolk, Virginia, where the city didn't maintain adequate control over its HUD funds. Why was there such a significant drop in building permits in the last couple of years? Why did a former black female city employee have this to say about Dr. Falken? The new director's core management style has affected those in the department, employees through the organization, and community partners as well, establishing a reputation of bullying and disrespect. This claim is supported by other claims. If you decide to keep Miss Smalltoni, you will be signing yourselves up for years of more resignations, more media scrutiny, less grant funding, and less business downtown. As someone who has lived here his entire life, I ask that you give Miss Smalltoni the opportunity to resign so that she and the city of Rocky Mount both have a future to look forward to. Thank you.
And then Deborah Parker.
Chef Jerome Brown, 6820th Circle, Rocky Mount. Think I have a solution to all of this. And I think that Miss Rochelle Smalltoni, as well as this council, has come up with a solution. It's the shakeup of the status quo. That's the problem. It's the shakeup of the status quo. Now, only people that's affected by that are those who are unhappy because they are part of the status quo. At the end of the day, it's my personal opinion that if Miss Rochelle Smalltoni was a white woman or a white male, this would not be happening right now. I believe the council is smarter than this. And I believe that Miss Tony has come here to do the job that she's been paid to do. And frankly, this city's newspaper should be ashamed of itself. It's ridiculous. What facts have you put in the newspaper to add up to her being guilty of anything? You used a bunch of accusations to drag this woman through the mud instead of supporting her. It's supposed to be equal science. It's supposed to be a thing where if you got the facts from one side, you got the facts from the other, or opinions from both sides. I haven't seen that. This onslaught of newspaper articles are ridiculous and haven't had any, not one fact that backs up your claims. But you sit there in this audience, knowing good and well you're wrong. I don't even know how you sleep at night. But I'm glad that this council is better than that. That's all I have to say.
And then Thomas Walker and Lauren Daughtry.
Mayor Council, my name is Deborah Parker. I live in Boyl Lake in Rocky Mount. My husband and I moved here approximately five years ago. We decided to retire here because of everything that the city had to offer and where it was going, to where it was positioned. Having been lived in probably every major city in this country, we saw that the potential this country, this city, had. I have to say, I am so disappointed. It has nothing to do with race or gender. I know, I was a woman. I worked for forty years in banking, and I can tell you, I worked there when women made less, when women didn't get positions, and this has nothing to do with that. But it has to do with integrity, professionalism, and doing what's right as a leader. I manage large groups of people. At one time, the twenty-two direct reports. Never asked anyone to work harder than I did, and I always assumed that everybody knew what they were doing before I made any decisions. And you know what? They all did well, and I never had to change anybody over. And I think that's what we need. It's not status quo. It's being respectful of people, understanding what they've had, and moving forward. And anyone who thinks, "I'm a white woman, does this have to do with race?" Let me tell you, my family looks like the United Nations. I have a son-in-law named Mohammed, one named Travis, and I have grandchildren adopted from Uganda, Mexico, South America, and from Nigeria. So this has nothing to do with race or gender, but it has to do with competency. And I'm sorry. I'm sorry you're going through this, but I thank the telegram for having the nerve to be able to report what is true and what isn't. Thank you.
And then Walter, and then Lauren Daughtry. After that, we'll have Jaclyn Barnes and Kevin Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I want to, first of all, say that mine, the original sin of America is racism. And we trace this back to that. We want to do a lot of tracing. We got to be honest with ourselves. I've been in this city, been in the past few cities for almost fifty years. I've seen a lot of conversation, hear a lot of conversation going on. I am so proud of where Rocky Mount is at this point. There are some things that have happened that I thought would never happen because of the attempt to keep us, us African-Americans, from rising up and being respected in this city. There have been a lot of overtime given into that. But let's, I, my time run out. Fifty years, think about it. There are many situations I can think of, but I think of one. It happened in nineteen seventy-eight. Where a black sanitation worker was doing his job and was picking up garbage. And he had a reputation in our community of being a benevolent, caring person. He did this, and the lady who has her toes near the trash can clean, and she put them out there and gave them to the city. Carried it to the city manager, city manager on, God bless his soul, may he rest in peace. And that city manager on his own ushered that lady to the police department and had a walk taken out on this man. And it put this city in uproar for about two months or more. The whole country. Yes, and I might say to you that Martin Luther King died a few months after that, standing with sanitation workers.
You've got about thirty seconds, Rob.
Okay. And I still want to say to you, it takes long, it takes seconds. That's why I wanted to hit that one thing. We got to stop playing games. There was a conspiracy going on in Rocky Mount and all of America. I listened to W B I D. And he didn't want them to do it, but I got to tell you that there was a group that was going to make hats, red hats. Saying, "Make Rocky Mount green again." That's the kind of spirit we do.
Let's see. Warren Dalton, and then Bronson Williams. And then, let's see, Robert Davis and John Jordan.
And that one, Ron T. Aaron. Members of the City Council, I got a fellow, Robert Walker. Well, first of all, he is from Suburban Park. For the record, he's Robert Warren Walker Jr., a representative of the fifth generation of Rockamount's, from Rocky Mount. Very proud of you. We grew up in and around Rocky Mount for five generations. I'm blessed to have my mother and my wife's mother that live here as well. They're in. Mrs. Watkins' mother, I'm named Nicole's mother. My wife and father, my grandchildren, my children, and I all graduated from the Rocky Mount school system. Upon graduating from Rocky Mount Senior High, I joined the Navy and traveled the world while serving in the country. My wife and I married, and we lived in our final home port of Hampton Roads, Virginia for several years. And then in nineteen ninety-three, we chose to make Rocky Mount our forever home. Since then, we've seen this city on the rise, take many hard blows from storms like Frey and Floyd. We saw the exodus of tobacco and textile industries. We've seen unimpated flight to the country just outside of the city limits. Somehow, our city has remained resilient, though. We've just begun to see the dilemma that we had back when I was a child. I address you today because I fear that this dilemma may be fading to nothing if something isn't done to bring world-class leadership to this town. In my humble opinion, hiring a person to lead our city with so much smoke trailing behind them and no true track record of success running a city of this size is just asking for trouble. I also sincerely ask that this council do what you just said you would do, thoroughly, swiftly, and independently investigate this matter. Let's get it behind us. Let's come together as a community and truly make Rocky Mount the center of it all and fulfill our long-term commitment to being the city on the rise. I commit to you that Karen and I will get involved and will stay involved. I canceled an important business trip to Charlotte today so I could be here and be an example for my children and for my other citizens of Rocky Mount. Excuse me. We recently participated in a mutual service with work to have an African church committed, and we committed to continuing outreach with them with the purpose of uniting our fellowships. We all have too much to lose and too much to gain to sit idly by. Karen and I have a choice. We can live anywhere in this country we want to. My job allows us to live anywhere. We choose Rocky Mount. We want to be in a world-class community. We ask you guys, help us get there. We ask you, fun, come around and work together to better our community. It's going to be hard work. Let's get it done. Thank you.
John, or is it, yeah, John, and then Bronson, and then Robert Davis. The evening council members, if you might know. First of all, I think I had. Next, you're speaking to Mike. If you'd like to turn it down some, try to, next you want to speak it right into it. Thank you.
Okay, you mean that? My name is John Jordan. I reside at twenty-one-two Bailey Street here in Rocky Mount. I had just two issues on the petition that I wanted to raise. One was I wanted the city council as a whole to possibly consider maybe setting, I don't know, setting term numbers to member's time on city council. That's something that, as a member of the city council, a different, sit-down will have a different members throughout the city that issue has come up, but I have never heard raised in any city council meeting, petition have ever been raised. Maybe, maybe that's something that really needs to be thrown to the table and considered. Secondly, I just want to address my support and my wish that the city gets past this issue with the city manager and that, for one, here's the facts as the mayor stated earlier. You haven't been charged with anything. You haven't been by the city or by the law. So I'm giving you my well wishes as you move the city forward. We continue to be a city on the rise as we knew before. I'm a citizen, and you have my full faith, coming from after a wonderful city council, my city manager, Charles Penn. And I just hope that you do well with what you have to work with, and you have my confidence, and hopefully you have the confidence of many others that will speak in the house for you. With that, I thank you.
Thank you.
Other comes a time when silence is betrayal. Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter. In that end, we remember that not, we remember not the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends. Only in darkness can you see the stars. When we talk about the situation that many people throughout our city is concerned about, for me, I cannot honestly speak to an issue without totally being informed. We live in a country where we are innocent until proven guilty. Many times, the Bible tells us, in one quote, one scripture talks about, "How many times shall one forgive?" Seven, seven times seven? Came back and said, "No, seventy times seven." In other words, as many times as necessary. We can all look back over our life, in our own lives. We might find that one thing, two things, or how many other things that may take, that should have ran us out or should have kept us back. But by grace and mercy, we're still getting here, standing today. Someone gave us an opportunity to do something better in our own lives. As we sit here today, if one group wanted to do this, another group wanted to do that, what is best for Rocky Mount? How do we continue the economic development that's going on in our city? How do we unite the city? One person said in our community many years ago, "This is a teachable moment." As I said in the paper on Sunday, we need to really look at that auditor position in our city office. That that person should report to a six-person panel, that included three members of the city council and three members of the public. That chief auditor should not operate under the threat of being terminated by the manager exclusively. That the manager must make a recommendation, recommendation rather, to such committee before that individual is terminated. So that person has true right to investigate what's happening within cities. So I hope that as a community, we will look at this teachable moment and see how do we move Rocky Mount forward. Oftentimes, deletion or termination is not the answer, but really, the answer is working together for one common goal and moving Rocky Mount forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I want to hear, I believe, Robert Davis, Kelly Kennedy, and then this here from Jacquet Lynn Barnes.
My name is Robert Davis. I live at eighteen-twelve Danaham. You know, I've heard several people talking about the truth. But we had a time in America right now where we accept our life quicker than we accept the truth. I can show you the truth. I can hit you with the truth. And you will justify that life quicker than you will accept the truth. Now, when you came out of closed session and you spoke there, um, you said you hadn't spoken what you wanted to speak to us. And you spoke about, um, Miss Collins. One of the things you said, you said the chief of police stood about, and he found nothing, nothing on her. Now, I hear people coming up there saying that she's guilty of this, she's guilty of that. And I feel, you don't say that with another sound. So now, if they don't want to believe what you said, they don't want to believe what the chief of police who went to jail or somehow said, "So you're going to make up your own truth." You will take your own lives and make them true. So there's nothing that y'all can do to satisfy people who've got a hidden agenda. See, there's no sense in us playing poppycock with you. Let's tell the truth. See, when you got a hidden agenda, nobody can testify. If you really wanted to sell this, we would give it over to the council. It was your job. We elected you to do it. So what are we down here for anyway? If we want to manage something, we go home and manage our own. What are we paying you for? We pay you to do a job. But yet, we will come down here. We will take over there.
You've got about thirty seconds.
This is ridiculous. You know why we can't go forward? Because we got too many people who want to take their own lives and turn it down to the side and create their own agenda. Look, if you want to move forward, we got to get rid of the old poppycock and pull it together and quit faking like you want to play the odds and get on his damn back.
Hello, my name is Kelly Kennedy. I'm a reporter with CBS Seventeen. The reason I'm here is because I requested interviews with city council, the mayor, and the city manager, and those requests were denied. I don't know if you will be able to answer today, but I wanted to at least put some of those questions on record and hopefully get a response back at some point. So I understand a handful of department heads have left since Miss Smallt Tony has been city manager. Mayor Holmes, you just mentioned there are some concerns about employee turnover. I wanted to know if any of the city staff believe that the reason these employees left is due to Miss Smallt Tony's management style. I also wanted to know if Dr. Landis Falken still lives in Virginia? And I would also really like to hear, from you and Miss Smallt Tony, I would like to hear your side of things when you're ready to speak with us. So that's it. I'm going to get an answer.
Not right now, yeah. Let's see. This is Jacquet Lynn Barnes coming in. Is that correct? And then, let's see, after you, I have here Nehemiah and Mark Russell.
Afternoon, council members and Mayor Holmes. I've been with the city of Rocky Mount's employees since nineteen ninety-nine. I think it is important to note, many employees wanted to come here today to speak, but they changed their mind in the final hours out of fear. If Miss Smallt Tony loses here today, how they will be treated by management in the future. Currently, we have a table talk held monthly, initiated by our current city manager. Employees get the opportunities to meet with her and speak their concerns about anything work-related without the fear of retaliation. This is one resource that many lower-level employees feel have given them a true voice. Last March twenty eighteen, I attended the day and a half heart training that was highlighted in the Telegram. The very next day, I told my then-director, several coworkers, and later, the HR director, for the first time in eleven years, many years, I felt inspired. I felt elated and yearned to do more as a city employee. I no longer felt complacent, and I wanted to grow in this organization. I hadn't felt that way in forever. My exact words were to my then-director, "I felt like a flame has been lit inside me." The workshop was very personable. I honestly could not tell you the last time as an employee I ever went to a workshop. Mrs. Smallt Tony has been in government for over thirty-five years. She was a budget and management analyst. She was a personnel analyst and assistant city manager. She didn't accomplish all of these by being completely incompetent. The question is, how did we get here? It truly depends on whom you ask. Some say race, some say relational, some say her past. One thing no one can debate is her actions aren't illegal and it's not criminal. No doubt, there's much work to be done in Rocky Mount, and it's not beneficial for its employees or residents to draw a wedge in our leadership. I ask for unity and acceptance internally and externally, whatever decision is made here today.
You've got about thirty seconds.
That's it.
Thank you. Dean Kitchen, and it looks like a toilet vest.
My name is Mark Russell. I reside at one twenty-one fifty-four Rocky Mount Hotel, the mayor's council for speaking. I'm not going to talk on one, but we might even talk about it. I have some other serious concerns that I don't think about, a little bit of a real problem. Just a little background history, my occupation, I've attended probably three hundred town council meetings in the last twenty years on various matters. And a lot of towns where the council members will vote, there will always be somebody to accuse themselves. Not a lot, but a lot of times out of those three hundred meetings, probably fifty percent of the towns have seen people who accused themselves because it was a potential conflict of interest. Just recently, you know, we went to a board of adjustment meeting in Excalibur County to argue the taxes, the county taxes, and a person there who knew his family members, they accused themselves. But that doesn't appear to be the situation that this board operates on, that they've accused themselves. You know, I've read through the general statutes and I've looked at the UNC council, school government. They think that it's on accusing themselves, and it doesn't appear that that happens. It appears there are some members of this board that have some potential for direct compensation, direct benefit, that don't accuse themselves. And I know that's been talked before by Mr. Rose here, but I think we really need to take a good, hard look at the conflict of interest and the future contracts that come up. You know, I request that the city attorney go back and look at some of the contracts and some of the votes concerning the downtown center and OIC, and really take a hard look at that. Because again, if you look at the general statutes, and I'm sure you're familiar with those, it appears that we have a serious conflict of interest. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Rocky Mountain, North Carolina has sundry issues.
Speak your mind.
Rocky Mountain, North Carolina has sundry issues. City Manager Rochelle Smallton is not one of them. This highly qualified woman has the requisite education, knowledge, and experience to move our city forward and upward. And yet, there seems to be a sinister undertaking by disgruntled elements in our city to undermine a vision that I and many others believe is progressive and socio-economically avant-garde. Sabre, a word of early seventeenth-century French origin, that is a type of wooden shoe that French peasants wore and used to throw into the machines in order to stop production. Thus, we get the word sabotage. New managers, new ideas, new structure, they run contrary to the status quo. And there are those who would just find what was going on. Disparity in pay and lack of diversity in the ranks of the fire department, a deficit of accountability and promotions in certain city departments, city workers using city equipment and inventory to build pig cookers and dish stands and subsequent assembly online. Would it land on by the city stripped of that timber and sold without the city's knowledge? And the list of enterprises go on. Manager Smallton was not here when these things began all were exposed, but I have every confidence that under her leadership, they can and will be prevented from happening in the future. So remodeling an office suite that speaks nineteen eighties when you walk in, hiring people who are competent and loyal to her vision of what Rocky Mountain can be, unsubstantiated allegations from potentially disgruntled employees, and portions of a now-seven-year-old reprimand letter from a mayor in Georgia. These and other trivial dalliances are what Manager Smallton is being castigated in the press and the public now? Really? But what about employee talk? The new Department of Community and Business Development, and the employees feeling more comfortable in bringing their issues to the city? Duke, Menjies, Bachelor, Turner, Raper, Vani, when you leave this chamber today, take a look at the walls and that will find that they represent a standard that was never questioned and should have been. You'll find that a city that the cry for what's best for the city was an exclusive and not inclusive statement. So to hell with Savannah, Georgia, this is Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. Manager Tony Council, I have been trying to figure out what it is. Why is this attempt to sabotage afoot? I have racked my brain trying to figure it out, and the only conclusion that I could reach is that the room got dark. And when the room got dark, there are those amongst us who got scared. We found out that even today, we have those who are afraid of getting dark.
We have here from Jane Kitchen, I think it's Delaine Austin, and Hubert Pugn in that one.
My name is Jane Kitchen, eleven thirty-three Alton Road. Friends with the majority of Carolina, thank you for your service. I called all of you before the meeting last week, and I've served in public service at Pasadena, in the school board. Very much appreciate your service.
Make sure you close to the mic.
Easy thing to do. The reason I'm speaking here today is that, first time, I wanted to say, Mayor Holmes and Mayor Quaidham Rogers, thank you for your statements. I really like that you are taking the public's concerns seriously. There's very, very low morale, and lots of lack of confidence in city government, and it needs to be addressed as quickly as you all can. The town does not need to be enduring this right now. I serve on the hospital board of governance, and we are looking at bringing in new healthcare professionals. I know you're all aware of what Norris Tulsa and the Harris Gateway Partnership is doing, they're trying to attract new people here. They're not going to come when they feel, a lot of them will not be inclined to come when they see that what's going on in this community. We've got to turn the tide, and we've got to deal with this quickly. I own a building in downtown Rocky Mountain, the Almond's Road Building, and a few years ago, when HBO came here to do a big feature on Rocky Mountain about the youth sports at the event center, two videographers bought the Almond's Building, and they hired an architecture firm to draw renderings for it. They were going to put three loft apartments upstairs, they were going to develop the downstairs into a retail restaurant. When they have seen that nothing is happening downtown, they decided that it was not worth their investment. They were planning to invest in our town, as are many people that I met through Trent, through Ben Braddock's wonderful efforts. They were coming because of the excitement. We had a meeting at the Almond's Road School one day, ninety people came, celebrating, wanting to invest in downtown Rocky Mountain. They're not here anymore, and we've got to turn that around. We've really got to make a change, and make a change quickly. I'm not here to tell you how to do your job, but I implore you with haste to do everything possible to restore confidence in our city government. Thank you.
Thank you. Delaine Austin, is that right? And then, we've got here from Hubert Pugn.
Good afternoon, I'm the council member, Mayor Holmes. My name is Delaine Austin. I reside at eleven thirty-six Sunset Avenue. I'm just coming in, speaking on the fact that I do hope that us, as a city, can come together and make it better. Like she just said, you know, with investors that are wanting to come to the area. Downtown would be a perfect opportunity for the growth with the new event center that's here. I work at a location down here in downtown, and parking is my issue. When the event center has their functions, it seems as if the designated parking spaces is now affecting the businesses that are located at Douglas Block location. So I just would like to just, you know, bring something forth that maybe something can come there. It doesn't affect our customers and our clients, we have disabled clients, customers, and they can't walk on this. So some of the parking for the downtown businesses that's on the Douglas Block. But other than that, I just hope that everyone can come together and that we can figure something out so that this can continue to see the light.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pugn now, and then, I think it's Karen Kirk and Stacy Graham. Is Mr. Pugn still here?
No, sir.
Okay, if he's gone, then we'll call him, call Karen Kirk. He's good. Are you Miss Kirk? No, you're not, okay. Karen Kirk, are you here? If not, Stacy Graham, are you Miss Kirk? Yeah, I've got you coming up in a minute, but we'll go to Stacy Graham, then, Miss Best, you'll be next. After, after Miss Graham.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Stacy Graham, seventeen twenty-one Country Club Road. The last ten days, almost two weeks, have been very emotional. I felt mad, embarrassed, awestruck, ashamed, and now just sad. Sad that what is going on here, sad that it's going to draw on and take some time. The council has heard my issues for over a year. The council, including Ms. Small, have been unresponsive. When I spoke with Ms. Small in my dining room, she said that she was putting forth a process to make building permits easier to find, easier to obtain, and track. That system's not in place, it's out of here. We've talked about needing better animal control and animal response. That's a basis of crimes. Nothing's happened. Talked about being responsive to small businesses. I am a small business. I chose to come here. So far, it's not paying out. I did my research in two thousand sixteen, when the city was moving forward. And since then, it's stagnant. People are pulling, it's not moving forward. Please, resolve this issue, and do it with some dignity.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Natari Best. I reside at one ninety-six East Tarni Street here in Rocky Mountain. Also a business owner on Tarni Street as well. Just like to give you a little history of Rocky Mountain, and implore upon you, city councilmen, that city council curses, that we must not let history repeat itself. In eighteen seventy-one, the county line was moved from the Rocky Mountain mills at the Tar River to the railroad tracks. For many years, those railroad tracks have divided this city. Edgecombe County side versus Nash County side. An issue of growth and development for Edgecombe County, limited growth and development for Nash County, and those pockets of poverty in Nash County as well. Now is the time to rally behind an innovator, an instrument of growth and development. And this is what Ms. Smallton is and will be for Rocky Mountain. City council, you must take the lead in not repeating itself. Because the embarrassment to North Carolina and to this country is the racial divide. That those railroad tracks divide this city. It is time for all citizens to come together and to unite as one in a united Rocky Mountain, regardless of race, creed, or color. Thank you very much.
Excuse me? I've got Russell McIntyre and Lori Menjies. Did I miss somebody? Is Boyd here? Is Russell McIntyre here? Are you Russell? No, I didn't think so. Okay, they're in the overflow, so if you're still here, one is in the first floor, I know this is Russ coming in now. And I'm not sure if Maury's still here, but if she's here, she can make her way up. And again, did I call your name? Okay, well, okay, yeah, then you were in the other room, I went to where I had so long, let you speak, then Russ, you can come down, and then Maury's.
Thank you, Mayor, and first of all, my name is Kay McKee Walker.
Couldn't read it, I'm sorry.
Anyway, I live at thirty-three sixteen Winston Road, Rocky Mountain.
Can you hear you? Get that mic close to you.
Moving out to the mic. Anyway, I would like to thank you all for being here, allowing us to speak on behalf of our residents. And I'd also like to give a special thank you to Lyndall John Kay, staff writer for the Rocky Mountain Telegram, for exposing the story to we the people of Rocky Mountain. Because, you know, we just trust all of you to do what it is in our best interest. God only knows the rest of the story. However, in lieu of the alleged mismanagement of Ms. Rochelle Smallton, it is my opinion that she, together with the council members who voted to hire her in the first place, knowing her history on previous positions, should all submit their resignations in order to clear the slate clean, so our beloved city of Rocky Mountain can put this nightmare behind us and move forward as best we can. Because in the public sector are the worst workplace, Ms. Rochelle would have already been gone and replaced by a qualified person. Has nothing to do with race, I'm simply trying to avoid race, I think it ought to be removed from our dictionary. I've been in Rocky Mountain for fifty-two years. When I came to Rocky Mountain, the downtown area was safe to walk down the streets, speak to one another regardless of color, and we could go shopping, there were lots of night... You know, this whole thing is just a total nightmare. John T. Menjies, Bill Rose, Bill Stansel, and other businessmen in the community worked diligently to bring industry to Rocky Mountain, and that's what brought us from Denver, Colorado, to Rocky Mountain. And I recently had a fellow who had lived in Rocky Mountain many years say he had to come to Rocky Mountain for a visit, and when he went down, he was absolutely appalled that our city fathers over the years had allowed our downtown area to become in the situation that it's in. I can imagine what... Okay, I can imagine what Amtrak folks think of our city when they ride through the town. It's a disgrace.
My name is Russell McIntyre, I live at eight twelve McColl Lane. Members of the Rocky Mountain City Council and Mayor, as a resident and property owner, I ask you to resolve the current turmoil involving the city manager. I do not judge the validity of accusations that have been discussed publicly the last few weeks. I doubt I even have access to all the information and facts needed to determine the truth. However, I believe it is the responsibility of our elected representatives to end this matter. It is a huge distraction, therefore delaying the progress of our city. How many opportunities for new business and economic investments are we missing by allowing such bad publicity to continue? How many visitors have come here recently only to be discouraged by our turmoil? What does it do to the morale of our city employees, our business owners, and their employees, and citizens of Rocky Mountain? I moved here over forty-one years ago because of the opportunities available. Compared to the city I left, it was a boom time. I married, raised two children, I started two successful businesses. I worked hard, I hired employees, and sometimes I had to fire employees, but it was up to me. Now, it is up to you. The council, city council members, and the mayor to end this turmoil and get us back on track to be a city of opportunity, not only for our citizens, but to anyone who is looking for a place to live, work, and prosper. It is now your opportunity to do your job. Thank you.
Thank you. Then after that, we've got here for, is Karen Jones here, I think you might be on the first floor. Atrium, if you're there, I ask you to work your way up.
And they can use the elevator for you. Lori Menjies, twenty-two twenty North the Resilient Boulevard. I'm just speaking for myself, not a group. I have been in Rocky Mountain for forty-seven years. I am an alumni of UMC, small business person, retired art teacher. I've worked with lots of people, I don't care what color you are, I just want you to do the best for Rocky Mountain. Not for yourself, not to feel like you've got power, not to fuss at somebody because they're of one color or another. You've got to do the best for Rocky Mountain. We, all taxpayer people, need someone to keep an eye on the hen house for the good of all Rocky Mountain. Not one section or another, all of us. We all pay taxes. Make decisions good for the city. One other ques... I've got a question. Does each council person have to oversee a department like police or what? No, okay. Lucky y'all. And how many qualified people wanted to have the job of Rocky Mountain's city manager? That would be a good question. And I guess this has already been brought up, but I feel like we need to mention, and of course it's already done, the elephant in the room, was being black woman your main qualification for getting this job? main qualification for getting this job? Um, but I think enough is enough, and good stuff. Yeah, I think we all should be good stewards of Rocky Mount's citizens, for us taxpayers.
Try to be respectful of everybody, and again, um, we are almost at the end here, so, uh, we're just, um, I know this is, I think you, you came up downstairs, are you Ms. Jones? Yes, ma'am. Come up, and then we're gonna have Tasha Aldridge, Kimberly Evans, and A.B. Whitney in that order, and then we're gonna be done with this portion of the meeting.
Hello, my name is Karen Jones, I'm at twenty-one seven one zero. I am the owner of Clean Sweep, General Services.
Yes, make sure you speak up, it's speaking.
I am the owner of Clean Sweep, spelled with two E's, for those who cannot spell it right. Okay, we have been in business for ten years, just to clear up those who assume I've been in business for thirty, uh, thirty days. No, I've been at L.L.C. for thirty days. I've been doing services with the service of Rocky Mount, Wilson, Nashville, Tar, and surrounding areas since two thousand and nine. My reputation, my work, my staff, and the service I do at Rocky Mount speaks for itself. I'm not here for the names that have been brought up in the, in the Telegram. Yes, that, those are married names, has no relation to anybody up in the City Council, anybody in the Villas that I now have pres- recently claimed for. Every contract that I have, and everything I've done, what my company has is now, I have busted my butt, and I have earned it, and I have got it, not handed to me for whom I am, okay? And I'm sorry for what's going on here, I pray that everything works out, I'm not to get into it, I've heard, I'm not making judgment, it's not, it's not my job, like it was said before, it's up to the city officials, I hope you work it out. My only concern is to clear up all the stuff that I've read on social media and in the paper about my company, that has nothing to do with this. Those who are gonna feel some type of way about when I, I was awarded Fair Square, yes, I was at the bids, every bid that the Rocky Mounts had, I've been there inside me the past Clean Sweep. So, for those, all my last words I got to say, like my great ancestors, I too have a dream, I'm living it, I'm willing to live it, when I pass home, my dreams gonna live on, because I have beautiful children and grandchildren who's gonna carry on. So those, I would please, as you give me respect to my family, my business, be with all of this, and let me continue to do what I've been doing for the past ten years, is giving amazing general services for the surrounding area of Rocky Mount. Thank you, y'all, for the last thing.
My name is Tasha Aldridge, and I'm gonna speak on behalf of my business, Mutley Crew. I'm at three oh one South Church Street, across the street, actually, here from City Hall. I'm coming to you not only today as a citizen, but as a business owner in downtown Rocky Mount. I was one of the few businesses that opened in twenty eighteen, and I will be one of the businesses that are leaving in the next two months. I will not stay downtown. I love the look of downtown. My husband and I were excited to be here. My husband's a city employee, he can't speak too much. That's a city employee. We were excited to be part of what was gonna become downtown. However, within a few months, all the talk and hype, it quickly turned to dismay. For starters, we have a community and business development? Well, I find it as useful as our animal control department. There's nothing to help new businesses get started, tell you where to go, what we need, or anything in between. John Jessa was the only person that I had ever seen in my business from any of you guys. I'm in one of his ward, I cross the street from another, and I live in a third. Being part of downtown has become pretty much like an adult high school. You have your groups and cliques, and each one to promote what they think is important and what's gonna help the community, but it's more like who can help whom and what they can do for each other. Nobody works together. And I don't have time or energy for such childish games. Knowing some of these businesses, they are the last ones that need to give advice. Over the last year, I've formed some great friendships with some great businesses around town like Tipsy Tomato, Arkham, Rock City Power Sports, Modern Electric, and the list goes on. We're different people, different areas, and we like to attract people, each of us have our own clientele, but that's what we do, we support one another. We try to drive people to different areas of town, because collectively as a whole, we need to focus on the town as a whole and not specific areas. Downtown's a mess. Lastly, to jump onto a second issue, for years now, various people, including myself, we have addressed the issues on animal control ordinances. Today, we still haven't made-
You've got about thirty seconds.
We still haven't made progress. The Animal Advisory Board is not formed, and we just recently had an animal control employee arrested for domestic violence strangulation and preventing emergency contact. If you'll do that to a human, what in the world do you think people do to those animals over there in the shelter? But again, that's been a couple of years that we've been addressing, and it's pointless. It's quiet, and we have crickets chirping in the background because nothing is happening. But come April, the one thing that will happen is I will be from downtown.
Abby's here, she was on the first floor, and in the meantime, Mr. Whitney, why don't you come on up? Kimberly Evans is here, if you can make your way up, if not, we're gonna go ahead here for Mr. Whitney.
Mayor and, uh, Council, thank you for giving us the opportunity of the public to make a comment here. I'm sad that we're, where we're at right now, but I have to feel like, and I've told many of my law players over the years, and my family and others, in life, we're right where we find we've put ourselves. And we, as a city, are right where our leadership has put us. I think the Council should be ashamed of where we're at right now. I commend you for what you've decided to do in appointing someone to look into this. I hope that will be done quickly. I hope that you will not just interview people who are currently working with the city, but ones who were here before, and come to a quick decision to put this behind them. Because this gonna take a long time for us to get over. And hopefully, we'll learn from where we're at today. We won't make the mistake that we made to put us where we're at. Whatever that mistake was, whether a person's doing things that shouldn't be done, or whether they're doing a good job, and, and it's come out different, makes no difference, the facts are we are where we are. And as leadership, you are the ones that should be helping to clear it up, and hopefully would have prevented it ever happening to start with. I've lived here in Rocky Mount pretty much all my life, and this is not about race. Ever since I was in college, and I watched Rocky Mount go through a bunch of mess, and I saw 'em burn Raleigh down in neighborhoods, I've always felt like that maybe by the time I got to be in the door, we would be over this mess of racial stuff. And there are people in this world that will not let it go. I wish we could take it off all qualifications on, when you apply for a job, whether you're male or female, black, white, or whatever, doesn't need to be considered. This is about people doing their job, doing it like it should be done.
Thirty seconds, Mr. Whitney.
And that's all that we're asking, is that you do your job like it ought to be done, and get this behind us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks, and we've been through all of the, uh, people that had signed up, um, we are, and it took us just a little over an hour or so. I want to thank you all for being respectful of each other, for listening to each other. Uh, like I said, this is a difficult issue that we're dealing with here, we do want to address it as quickly as we can, and hopefully the action that the Council took today will move us in that right direction. Uh, we are gonna move on to our, uh, agenda item, which is, and, um, y'all welcome to the whole meeting, so if you wanna exit this time, we all stand, we are gonna go to item number six, this time, we'll talk about a two-minute break, and people will be able to, I don't know, maybe that's how.
See you home.
Yeah, right.
I'll try to behave, man. We're going to do it.
Here's, here's your score.
I tell you what, that's the nicest when I started to eat it, and I said, no, that wouldn't be right.
All right, how you doing? How you doing? All right.
What's going on? Catch us, is this good stuff?
Oh, yes, sir, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Proud of your roots.
Thank you, good to see you, Charles.
Have a good one.
Go ahead, get started on our table there. We've got a loop, loop on item number six, this is the consent agenda, uh, item A is consideration of taxes and releases and refunds, so there's a scheduled pay, these are for taxes under a hundred dollars recommended for release and a refund by the manager. And item B, which is a consideration of adoption for fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen budget ordinance amendment, it increases our canteen fund appropriations to reflect revenues received in, uh, multiple canteen fund accounts. Recommended actions to approve the consent agenda, inclusive of approval of tax releases and/or adoption of ordinances. Any motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item six is approved. Uh, item seven is a consideration of the, uh, notification award of the two thousand eighteen bulletproof vest grant. Uh, this was for thirteen thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars, it required a local match at fifty percent. This is to be used for funding for forty-two new bulletproof vests, and two project ordinance appropriating the grant funds. Recommended actions to acknowledge and approve the acceptance of the grant, and authorize the Mayor and City Clerk to execute any required documentation, two, approve the local match, and three, adopt the project ordinance. Uh, motion by Councilmember Watkins, second by Councilmember Miller, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item seven is approved. Item eight is a consideration of minutes and recommendations from a, uh, regular scheduled committee to hold, which was held on January the fourteenth, and a special call committee to hold, which was held on January the twenty-first. One, uh, amends to the land development code, uh, ordinance for hitting any parking of oversized commercial vehicles on residential zone property. Uh, I think we were supposed to get an update on that tonight, are we gonna still get it? Or we're gonna defer it?
Well, Mayor and, uh, members of Council, that would be a two discussion, but yes, we were gonna update you, uh, on, um, the, um, ordinance as recommended to be amended. So if you'd like to go back, uh, to the minute to discuss that, uh, defer to, uh, the next meeting, that would be probably best.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Item two, awarding condition committees, again, I think we deferred this, uh, I'm assuming there's gonna be a recommendation that defer that to the next meeting, all legal. Uh, we have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will approve the minutes, uh, in some closed sessions, uh, these were the incentives on土地开发, economic development, and personnel. So, again, we need to prove that as well as the minutes. The motion, recommended actions to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion, second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Now, item eight is approved. Item nine is a consideration of a fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen budget ordinance, this is amendments and, uh, findings and adjustment related to lease installment, capital projects, and the general fund, water fund, and sewer fund. Recommended actions to adopt the ordinance.
Aye.
First by Councilmember Bullock, second by Councilmember Joyner, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item nine is approved. Item ten is a consideration, this is the bid, I think the young lady just was talking about that, this is awarded Clean Sweep, um, and, um, there are two options here, uh, the recommended actions to award the bid is recommended, and authorize the Mayor and City Clerk to execute bid contract on behalf of the city, but I'm gonna call on the city manager to make the comment at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, at the, uh, last meeting, you asked staff to review this, uh, we actually have, uh, another option for Council to consider. Uh, initially, option one was to award the contract to the lowest responsible bidder, which was Clean Sweep, for a three-year total cost of eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-four cents. We found that in our, um, bid information, the city does have the, um, opportunity to split the award, so a second option for Council to consider would be to award the base bid to Royal Quality Maintenance as the lowest responsible bidder, at a three-year cost of three hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars. And then the alternate bid to Clean Sweep as the lowest responsible, um, bidder at a three-year total cost. So, it's an opportunity to really have both firms, uh, engage with us. Uh, Royal and both, uh, Clean Sweep are doing work for the city president. Uh, both are M W B E, uh, firms, local firms, and, uh, this is just another option for your consideration. We did not find anything, any discrepancy in the bid process to award the entire contract to Clean Sweep as we recommended, but again, this is just an option, uh, for your consideration.
Would you speak, excuse me, would you speak about the effective is on the total cost, I was believing?
Uh, I think originally, it's gonna be extremely close, if you add, uh, three seventy-three, five seventy-two, which, I'm sorry, I did not do, and the four, six is six, nine four nine, I think we're gonna be very close to the original bid of both at eight seventy-two, two thirty-six.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an original determination to award the entire award on the street for total cost of eight hundred and seven two thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars, forty-four cents, as table the original motion, because there was a question that was raised from the citizenry about this person's, uh, history. Since there is no history, we have no record of any reason not to trust her, the finance department did what they normally do all the time, and they found nothing, I see no reason to change that person's, uh, behavior. They did, they did, we went through the, the only issue was a question of who it was and what they did.
I have a motion, uh, by Councilmember Blackwell, same by Councilmember Knight and Turner, um, is there any other discussion?
Mayor, and to the city manager, um, it's-
Mayor and to the city manager, it's at least my understanding, my experience, that the city has a well-developed ability to review contracts and make decisions like this. Would you make a comment or two about that process?
Yes, so certainly. So when bids go out, and of course, this is all governed also by state law, whenever we put out a bid for the lowest responsive, responsive bidder is where the award would go. Unless, of course, there is some discrepancy in the business firm's ability to perform services that we contracted. So the information is publicly advertised. There's a certain period of time for people to respond to it. Usually, there's also a pre-bid conference so that anyone who has an interest in submitting a bid clearly understands what the bid is about, what the services we're looking for. They have an opportunity to meet the staff, to ask any questions they might have so that they're clear about what will be evaluated. As I said, once that is done, then they go through the waiting period for bids to come in. There's a team of people who will review the bids based on criteria that have been established and advertised. And then at that point, a firm is selected, and we bring it to council board for your consideration.
I was looking for you to talk about the vetting. I mean, you're truly vetting people like this organizations and individuals to ensure that they have the capacity.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
That's fundamental to the process.
Yes, and in this case, Clean Sweep is a contractor for the city. So they're currently performing work with us now and have been for quite some time.
My question. Then how does it happen? What brought us to the option you were offering today to split the bid? I mean, and that apparently has come up since our agenda was put together on Thursday, I guess.
Right, so what brought me to that was to make sure that council had all options that might be available to them. And council member Blackwell is correct. I think the question was about the organization, if you will, of Clean Sweep. But it's also my responsibility to bring to council any other options that might be out there for that consideration. So that is why we brought that one to you if you chose to do it. And again, it's an option.
We have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item ten is approved. Item eleven is a consideration. This is with electric cities, annual utility poll, lock and bid agreement and purchase contracts. This is for with utility polls. There's certain participants, other cities that partner with us. And there's a list there, A, B, and C. Recommended actions to award the bids as recommended and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute bid agreements and purchase contracts on behalf of the participants.
So moved.
Motion by council member Rogers, second by council member Miller, I believe. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item eleven is approved. Item twelve is a consideration of award line purchase agreement. This is with Nash County relative to the sale of water-related assets. The recommended actions to approve the agreement, authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same on behalf of the city.
So moved.
And a motion by council member Blackwell, second by council member Miller. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item twelve is approved. Thank you for being here. We're going to go back and, yes, I do want city manager to make a statement, and then we're going to go into a closed session for a economic development issue and a personnel issue.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to recognize a very long-serving employee of the city, Jonathan Boone. Jonathan, if you would come to the podium there. Jonathan was, as he's coming, was hired to begin his work with the city as a traffic engineer back in nineteen ninety-eight. He was the assistant city manager, assistant city engineer for transportation and then later water resources. He served as the assistant director of public works beginning the first of two thousand and six. And then was subsequently reported, considered for the directorship of public works in two thousand and seven. In two thousand and thirteen, he served as the director of public works and water resources when both divisions were joined together to form one department. He's been a tireless supporter of United Way and an active participant in the city's diversity and inclusion initiative. So with that, we certainly wish Jonathan the very best in his professional growth. Thank you. Thank you.
We want to thank you all for being here. I do need a motion to go back into a closed session. All in favor, keep talking. Okay, now, motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Yeah, thank you for being here.